Okay, good evening. Welcome to my first live Meet the Candidate County Hall. I'm Rebecca Samolsky. I believe most of the people who are on so far tonight know me, but for the interest of those who might be viewing this later, I will give a little bit more background in a few minutes. My purpose of the meeting tonight is to help, to help all of you and others who might watch this recording afterwards have a better idea of who I am, learn a little about my leadership style and why I will make a good commissioner. I want to share my perspective on some of our current issues around the county, but I mostly want to hear from you all. I want to spend some time finding out what some of your concerns are, listen to your perspectives, respond to questions. And I'll dive a little bit into some planning and zoning, finding out what you think about what planning and zoning should look like in our county, as well as how you're handling current social tensions and what you think we need to stabilize our community through and after this pandemic. So this are some of the topics that I'd like to touch on, but I'm going to give a little overview of what we're going to do for the next hour or so first. So, thank you all who are able to join me tonight. This is kind of an interesting forum. I am used to seeing dozens or tens or dozens of other faces when I get on Zoom, so we'll, I'll ask you guys to turn your cameras on here in a little bit if you have good bandwidth for that. We are live on Facebook, as well as those who are directly in the Zoom meeting, and there may even be some folks that just call in. So when we get to questions, I will do my best to try to capture and respond to questions from all of those different places. We are recording, and I plan to post this afterwards on the Samolsky for Monazuma website. So, welcome. Thank you all for joining me tonight. I was going to ask that if you guys could find the chat buttons in the bottom, I'll give you just a kind of a little guide to what's here at the bottom of your Zoom screen. If you're on Zoom, you should be able to mute and unmute yourself, turn on and off your video, and there's a chat button there. There's also a participants list. You can see who else is on the call with us tonight. If you're on Facebook, you should be able to comment, and you can drop questions that way. And the first thing that I would like to do to just get folks to test that out, if you're willing, is I'd like for you to share one thing that you are passionate about in our county, in Monazuma County. And it could be one thing that you love, or one thing that you think needs to be addressed in the county. So just jot something down in the chat or in the comments, so we can make sure that that's working and get going. See, oh, there's a couple chatters. Good. Hey, Jamie, jumping in there. We're going to try to keep cameras off for just a little bit while I get going, and, or I could just say, anybody who wants to turn their cameras on, let's just turn them all on, because I think I'm a lot more comfortable that way, seeing your faces and talking with you. So if you've got good screen, let's do that. Thanks. Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Ross and Maya, hi. And for those of you that are just jumping on, we are, I asked if folks could put in the comment box or in the chat, if you're on the Zoom, please share one thing that you're passionate about in Monazuma County. Would be really hard for me to narrow it down to one thing, so that's why hopefully between all of yours, we'll have some commonality there. So, I am Rebecca Samolsky. I just found out finally last week that all of my petition signatures, I got 201% of what I needed to be on the ballot for Monazuma County Commissioner. And it is District 3, but the only thing that means is I have to live in District 3. Everybody in the entire county gets to vote on both of the commissioner seats that are open this fall. So there's been some confusion around that. I wanted to clear up. I am running because I care deeply about Monazuma County, and I was concerned about the future of our county. I've worked professionally for about the last 15 years in Monazuma County on complex issues, bringing people together to try to address some of the complex issues like wildfire and economic development, watersheds in our county. This feels like a really important time to have a leader who can help bring different voices to the table. I try to come at all problems with open eyes and open mind and listen to the people who care about those issues. When I'm working on any, any kind of bringing people together around a challenge, they start by trying to find common ground, figuring out, why are we here? Why are we all here together tonight? My guess is, a lot of, we could dive down, why, 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 but I bet a lot of us care deeply about Monazuma County and are also concerned about its future. And then from there, we can figure out, well, what are the obstacles that are standing in our way of getting to that future that we want to have, and keeping those things that we really love about this place? And what are those assets that we each bring to the table? What resources do we have to bear? And that's how I approach problems, and I think that's part of what would make me a different kind of commissioner. I grew up in Monazuma County. I went to elementary school in Mankas. We moved to Mesa Verde National Park, where my father was a law enforcement ranger up there for about five years. And he came to that after having gotten out of the active duty as an Army Special Forces medic. He just retired a couple of years ago from the National Guard. And so from my dad, I really have instilled in me this need to serve my community, care about other people. My mom was always a bit of an activist. She was kind of a Jewish hippie. I still have her No Nukes March on Washington t-shirt. And, but she came out west and served as a speech therapist on the reservation for many, many years, but also got involved in education, was on the open high school board for about eight years, I think. And she really instilled in me that desire to volunteer. My brother's on the computer with us tonight as well, and he's a big brother, so I followed him around. Hey, Connor. I followed him around to a lot of Boy Scout meetings, at least 10 years of being kind of a follow along Boy Scout, so maybe I'm not as prepared tonight as I should be, but I try, I try to come prepared. And he's pretty cool to have as a big brother, also really somebody who showed me how to connect with all kinds of different people. Anybody can get along with Connor. It's a little bit of my, my deep kind of history, my family history. Now I live here in the middle of Monazuma County, in the house that my parents built. And I live here with my husband, Joe, and with our two sons, Orin and Isaac, who are nine and a half and 11. And so I get to now figure out what it's like to be a mom in Monazuma County and all the things that go along with that. So a tiny bit of background, professionally, I wanted to be an Egyptologist from the time I was in sixth grade. I wanted to go be an archaeologist and started studying and spent every summer from, after my ninth grade year, all the way through college at Fort Lewis, doing different anthropology jobs with Crow Canyon Archaeological Center and Mesa Verde National Park and with the US Forest Service here. In the course of going to my undergraduate degree, I had some anthropology professors who really opened my eyes to how many little policy things were having a big impact on our lives, and that got me a little bit interested in the political side of things. So I dove in in 2005, started a master's degree in New Directions and Politics and Public, New Directions and Politics and Public Policy, because my master's degree from CU Denver. And I was able to take all of those classes from here in Monazuma County. It's one of the few master's degrees you can get. So a lot of the kind of leaders who have been through, work for a county and our cities here, city managers, previous county managers, have been through that same program, New Directions and Politics and Public Policy. And with that, I got started in land use planning in Monazuma County. They wanted me to come in and help out with some long range things, because the county didn't have the capacity to address the long range planning needs. There were too many applications coming in on a daily basis. So I got my feet wet in land use planning. Town of Mankas lost their administrator at the time, who was also their planner, and so they said, hey, can you come help us over here? And then I ended up moving to the city of Cortez, where I worked extensively on the comprehensive plan, which that was, that was at least, that was over 10 years ago. And so the 2020 vision that we had is coming to fruition in the city of Cortez. A lot of those things that we had planned out are coming to be a reality. So I'm proud of that. So I have a little land use background here. For the last nine years, I've been focused on wildfire preparedness issues, starting working with neighborhoods, like Ross and Gralia, Ross and Maya Gralia, worked with your neighborhood, working on an issue that crosses property lines that really, I really enjoy, because it brings people together to work on a common challenge in your neighborhood. So I really, with that work, really grew it here in Monazuma County, to a point where today I've moved on to working for Fire Adapted Colorado, and that's an organization where I get to support the local efforts through the other professionals. So now I'm a network coordinator, and I get to do what I'm really good at, where I can help connect people who have different skills that somebody else needs, or have a resource that somebody else needs with each other, so that they can make their work more efficient and more effective in their local place. And I really enjoy that work. But when I turned around and kind of just watching what's going on in Monazuma County, I felt like this is a really good opportunity for me to come back and try to make our community a better place. I'm going to try to shift towards getting you guys talking more and asking, asking you some more. So please feel free, if you'd like to turn on your videos, if you're on Zoom, please do. And if you guys can unmute yourselves and just let me know, what, what questions do you have about my background and experience, as far as how that qualifies me as a commissioner?
Rebecca, can you explain what being a commissioner means in Monazuma County?
Yeah, sure. I think it's a really important leadership position that should have a long range picture for our county. You should have some vision as a county commissioner, and be it not just your own, but be able to pull together the community towards a vision for our county. And county commissioners, they make budgetary decisions, of course, for county government that affect a lot of our different services. But there's other things they don't do. You know, we don't run the schools, obviously. We don't run Empire Electric. The special districts have their own administrations. So I think a county commissioner should listen and lead by example. I also think it's the role of a county commissioner to be a connection between our citizens and the outside world, to figure out. I was in Lewis last week, and a gentleman told me, there's nothing wrong with Monazuma County. It's these regulations from the state and federal government that are putting pressure and on our community. And there are a lot of things that happen from outside of our place that affect us. So there's definitely some space for a Monazuma County Commissioner to engage, to network with other people around the state, to be a voice for our citizens, for those state and federal issues. But mostly, we need to do a good job of providing good services here in the county. What other questions do you all have? Let's see, how will you? I see, Arlena asked, how will I effectively engage community members to develop that shared vision? I think that we need to have a lot of small group conversations and invite people to the table who have specific issues. So it takes people getting involved in the issues they care about. Not everybody needs to be involved in every conversation. If you know something about an issue and you want to have an impact on it, those are the people that need to be at the table to talk about those issues, whether it's healthcare or land use planning, or the county fair, or the roads. So I think the county can invite conversations and not just have one in the middle of a weekday, but invite more conversations, and then empower the people who live in the community towards carrying out that vision. And I don't want to design that process by myself, so I'm all ears. I think there is an element. I don't, Arlena, are you on the city council? Okay. I think that's another really important aspect of county leadership, is working with other leaders within the community, something which has been hit or miss from current and past commissioners. But I know all those folks, I work with a lot of our county leader, not county leadership, county abroad leadership, people who are leaders in our community, from Empire Electric to the, to the cities, to the Mountain U Tribe, to our federal government agency managers. I know all those people, and we'll also work with them to try to find that shared vision. Jamie, were you going to ask a question? Do I feel equipped to go into a male dominated commissioner culture? How will I handle that? Yeah, that doesn't bother me at all. People are people. There's, you know, 26,000 or so, maybe we'll get that census. Hopefully, people turn in their census, and we can figure out how many people live here. But, you know, there's like 26, 27,000 unique people in this county, and I actually think Kent Lindsay and Jim Candelaria could both be really good guys to work with. Connor, do we have any questions from Facebook posts right now?
Yeah, there's a few. Someone's asking how long you've lived here, why the parents chose to, why Mom and Dad built the house here. But you do have people asking about the internet speeds, getting fast internet, a few other things, but most of them are pretty similar to what's happening.
Okay. Yeah, I'm really hoping that my internet holds out tonight. I know that is a challenge, and if you're trying to work from home, that could definitely be a challenge with internet out in the rural part of the county. I don't see why we can't do something more like the electric co-ops with that eventually. But I think there had been an effort with the Monazuma Community Economic Development Association five to 10 years ago, and it probably took that whole five time, five year time span to try to figure out getting broadband out into the community. And that's one of the efforts that our county government has pulled away from the Economic Development Association and kind of left that whole countywide Economic Development Association to crash. But that group had been making some progress on broadband. And my family, we moved here first, right after I was born. I was born in Tucson, and then we moved here to Mesa Verde before I turned one. And that was to come to Mesa Verde National Park for my dad to work. And then when he decided to leave law enforcement at the park, we no longer had housing inside of the park, so they started looking for a place to live here in the community. And we found a cool piece of property down in the middle of Monazuma County, in the Pinion, Jennifer Woodlands, where we bought a trailer and, and my parents, just hard sweat labor while working full time, built this straw bale passive solar house that I get to live in now. And my dad's still with us. We just traded houses after my mother passed away, so that's how I'm here in this beautiful spot in Monazuma County still. And I wish we had water, but I don't have water rights on my property. So I'm going to go ahead and jump a little bit into land use. I just wanted to share kind of my view and experience, because I know this is something that's coming up currently, and there's always land use disputes, concerns in Monazuma County. I think it's a privilege to own land. Not everybody owns land. And there's responsibilities that come with land use. We need to be stewards of the land that we own. Our county land use code, there were aspects of it that were developed out of a 25-year-old comprehensive plan from Monazuma County. There's a lot of good recommendations in that 25-year-old plan, some of them that got put into code, a lot of them that never got put into any kind of code. And a lot of the stuff that was put into the code, the county really has not had the capacity to implement. And so that's led to this eroding away of those policies that had, had been built around some kind of long-term vision. And land use, because I have some background in it, and because I've worked in natural resource management that directly ties in with community development here in our community, land use is a really important issue to me, and it's one of the reasons why I felt like I needed to run right now. My parents bought this house, the trailer, on three and a half acres. My husband and I were living in town, and the neighbors who had that original 160 acres around our three and a half acre piece needed to sell their land so that they could go to Albuquerque for work. And we couldn't afford to buy the rest of that property that wrapped around this property, but we could afford to buy a piece of it. So we ended up buying a piece of this property, 40 acres, next to the three and a half, 35, next to the three and a half, just to give some kind of security that, to the land that was next to this house that my parents had built. Now, since that time, a lot of other houses, a lot of new houses has gone in, a lot of new subdivisions, and that's all right. We're going to grow. People want to live here, because it's an awesome place, and I want to keep it an awesome place. What I'm not comfortable with is when somebody comes in and gets one of those 160 acre tracts and then splits it without subdivision regulations into 440s, because you can do that without having to do anything, and then comes in, one after the other, and starts splitting those 40s into minor subdivisions, effectively creating 13, 10 to 13 lot subdivision through a bunch of minor developments, where they're sending themselves the notice that, about the development, because you got to send it to your adjoining neighbors. Well, half the adjoining neighbors end up being yourself when you do that. So that's something that concerns me. People are finding workarounds. There's a lot of people who just do whatever they want on their land and, and then ask for forgiveness later, beg for, they don't even have to beg very hard. So I think when you get a piece of property, you should have some idea of what you can do with that property, and what kinds of things are going to happen around that property. And then the only other thing that I'm going to say about land use, and then I'm going to shut up and listen to you all, is that the way it works now is, if you can check all of the boxes in the, all of the minimum standards for any kind of development, residential or, or commercial development, you can check all of the boxes, it gets approved, regardless of any kind of public comment. And a lot of it feels like it's based on short-term profit, without thinking about the long-term impacts of different kinds of developments and the collective, the cumulative impacts of unplanned development in the county. So I think we need to pay more attention to those cumulative impacts, and once you cut that four-foot deep trench across that agricultural field and put in that cement pad for the new construction, that doesn't go back to agricultural land. That is a scar on the landscape for a very long time. Even the fields out here that had houses, stone houses on them 1,100 years ago, people are still trying to work around those stone houses in those fields. So I figured I would just dive right into hard topics to start out with for this call tonight, and in hopes that my first call, I would have a friendly audience and people who could challenge me, and so what would you guys, what else would you like to know about land use, or what ideas and concerns do you have around land use in our county Any land use comments on Facebook, Connor?
No, just people asking, asking about it, like what you could cover, saying that's the topic. There's definitely people that are interested in, you know, high-speed internet and how that would help, you know, help education and remote work and stuff as well, so.
Yeah, and I think that's a really good, the high-speed internet aspect is, is an important land use thing as well, right? Our infrastructure, our development and our infrastructure should go together. There's a lot of people who come here, you see homes that get built, people move in, and they move two years later, for one reason or another, what they thought Monazuma County was when they moved here, they're not getting all the services that they need or they expect in a community. And I think that goes for our high-speed internet, and then something And then some things that are outside of county commissioners' control too, working with healthcare system and education. Anybody who's on the Zoom call that would like to unmute yourselves and ask a question or put something in the chat, it looks like. Oh, Elizabeth Manus asked if there are any concerns about trans basin water diversion projects. Yeah, water is an interesting one because county commissioners don't directly do anything with water. We support and fund the sheriff's office to have water officers. But the county has also been participating in regional conversations to try to make sure that we maintain as many water rights here in our part of the state as possible. My efforts and concerns around. So trans basin diversion is when the water from one slope, one river shed, one watershed is getting taken out of that and put into another one. Right here, 90% of the water, and I think it actually is over 90% of the water out of the Dolores River, is pumped out of the Dolores River and goes into the McElmo watershed and down into the San Juan instead of reaching the Colorado above Moab. So that's the way that we've been able to create such an amazing agricultural community here. Water is really the lifeblood of our community. The way that I have worked on water issues is to address our forest health. I was really instrumental in getting going the Dolores Watershed Resilient Forest Collaborative. And part of the focus of that watershed wildfire protection group here on the upper Dolores River is our water quality and our water reliability. We're trying to make our forests healthy so that they can absorb the water better and let it and also not be as susceptible to to disturbances like wildfire and beetle die-off that change the way water runs off of that landscape and can allow it to run off really quickly. So that's been a really important, I think we need to stay engaged in that. I think the county needs to stay engaged in the Dolores Watershed Resilient Forest Collaborative moving forward. Connor, do you have some other questions from?
Yeah, yeah, Carrie O'Brien on Facebook is talking a little bit about land use. He said there's people in the county who just run a few cows for a few weeks on a lease and they have ag status and they're really just residential. But but he said in his case, his ag status was stripped from his property as soon as he bought his place three years ago, even though he's running a small farm. And he was told specifically it would have to be cows or beans for him to get ag status back. So that's, that's from Carrie O'Brien on here.
That's really interesting. I don't know who told you that and that's not something that a county commissioner gets to to say. We have an elected assessor and I'm disappointed if our elected assessor would have told you that, but I do know that they've been trying to tighten up the ag status, the ag qualifications in the county. But you're right, that speaks to how our codes and policies are implemented in this county pretty much across the board. If you ask, or you know, you came in here after them with a bean farm, you may policies are not uniformly applied. And yeah, I think that's something we need to address for sure.
And then David Ross asks, what about the recent proposal to reduce the men lot size from three acres to one acre? And Carrie did say it was the assessor that told him that, by the way, as far as the last thing, but David asked about the three acre to one acre proposal.
Yeah, and Carrie, maybe we can talk offline as well. Yeah, so that's the huge next thing happening in county land use policy. The commissioners have asked the Planning and Zoning Commission to look at some changes to the land use code, including adding a one to three acre zone. Right now, the the minimum lot size is three acres with some minor exceptions for clustered development and for for lots that have access to municipal infrastructure but are still in the county. And they're also looking at changing the setback requirements, reducing the setback requirements for how close your construction can be to to roads and neighboring properties. And understandably, there's a lot of people who are really upset about that. To me, the big issue around the one to three acre lot sizes, I think maybe there are places that are appropriate for those smaller like lot sizes, especially if you're looking at trying to cluster housing with infrastructure and keep more of our open space. But I don't think it's appropriate everywhere. And I think a lot of the the anger that's happening around this proposed land use change is because there isn't any broad comprehensive plan for what we want the county to look like. So if we can it's probably going to go through because that's just kind of the way things go right now. Our commissioners who are term limited very much want to push this through before before they're not commissioners anymore. However, I think that we need to be hopeful. It doesn't mean that we're going to turn into a bunch of one-acre rectangles throughout the entire county with a gazillion people overnight. It just means that there's an opportunity for people to have smaller lot sizes and they would still have to go through all the process of the county to do that. And if I get in there, we're going to have some deeper conversations about what we want our county to look like and where that kind of sized zone is appropriate. And I will, I was gonna I'll tell you now and try to remind you at the end too, but I just checked the planning and zoning agenda for their meeting next Thursday night on the 13th. They didn't actually even put it on the agenda. They just said other items may be discussed. That's the other item that may be discussed on the planning and zoning meeting next week. It didn't say whether they were going to have a public hearing on it. Typically, I think that you need to advertise if there's going to be a public hearing, so they may not even be able to have one at the planning and zoning level for that. But they're not required to, to change the code. But still, I encourage people to show up there at six o'clock at the old county courthouse building on Thursday, the 13th, if you're concerned about those changes to the code that are being pushed through. And then the county commissioner should be having a hearing on that the following Tuesday. What else? Since I'm totally missing my chat, I know people are asking some good questions. Yeah, and Carrie on the ag status thing, I just wanted to say that I've looked at this and tried to figure this out for my property. You should, as long as you have a farm services number and you're able to show your income and expenses from your farm work, you shouldn't have any problem being able to reinstate the ag status. But I'm sure I'm making that sound a lot easier than it is. Okay, any questions on Facebook, Connor? Anybody else who's on Zoom have any direct questions around land use?
People on Facebook just talking a little bit about cluster housing being more ecologically sound, however, one acre lots wouldn't really be considered cluster housing, environmental land use plans overall.
Yeah, I think we need to have more than a single bottom line. I think we need to be planning and making decisions on a triple bottom line where we're thinking about the people who live here, we're thinking about the environment that sustains us. And lastly, an economy that can support those people in that environment.
As far as, but other than land use, you know, if you're moving off of that, you know, people are talking about you know, healthcare, consistent code enforcement, some other big topics, you know.
Okay.
Current COVID and leadership, you know.
That was going to be my next topic. I wanted to jump into healthcare a little bit. Just the kind of social disruption and the fact that we're doing a meet the candidate on Zoom instead of in person. Hopefully that makes it more accessible to people on a Tuesday night than might otherwise come out to the library for such an event. So it's really kind of simple. I don't think there's been a lot of leadership in our county or nationally with regards to the coronavirus. It's a new thing and there's new information constantly, so people on all sides probably have some standing when they say this is true, this isn't true, because all of the research is brand new and but I think that county commissioners, it's not their job to pretend that they're experts on something. We need to have more faith in our staff. I think there's been some consistent ignoring of health departments specifically expertise, not just with the coronavirus, but with the septic system example last year as well, that I can get more into if anybody wants to. We need to support our staff. The county has a lot of great staff. There are people who wear a half a dozen hats because you have to in small government. And county staff hasn't had a cost of living increase in six years. I don't know that this is going to be the time for it. It's going to probably be budget crunch time for everybody as taxes start rolling in. But that's a serious concern. We need to make Monazuma County a great place to work and we should be respecting the expertise that we've hired to work for the county. We have a mask mandate from the governor. It's, I think it's your job as a leader to lead by example. And the lack thereof and the telling people that it's impinging on your your freedoms. You know, if people are going to do what they want to do, I'm going to do what I think is right. Yeah. I'll follow the mandate. Let's see, I have a few other thoughts on cases. I mean, I just, I want to get us to a place where our kids can go back to school. And we're at a point where if we can keep the cases low, there's a good chance we can get our kids back to school this year and we can at least try it out for a little while. And you know, if we start seeing sheep, a steep increase in cases here, where we're running into challenges with our hospital being able to handle it, then our kids aren't going to be able to go back to school. We're going to have to shut things way, way down further again. So to keep things open, I think we just need to follow the health expertise in the nation and what they're saying.
On Facebook, folks are kind of talking a little bit about, you know, what the economy is in the county, the different, all the different all the different sub economies and from ag to tourism, everything in between.
Yeah, and and that's huge and that's really important right now too, with a lot of businesses that have been here for a long time, really. There's a lot of winners and losers right now with coronavirus. And if you're shipping stuff and doing curbside and making masks, you might be doing really well, but if you've got a restaurant right now, there's a lot of businesses that are really struggling right now. There's three times as many people who are trying to get support with food in our community as there were just a few months ago. So that's huge. Those are real issues. Steve online says he works at the hospital and coronavirus is a real problem. So thank you, thank you for being there. And do I see any connection with the Utribe? I'm going to use that as a segue to the economic development. So absolutely, we should be working with the Utribe. It's always been kind of a separate thing. They're an independent nation. And in some ways, above and beyond county politics, but the things that we do here in this landscape that we all share with the U people and everybody else who lives here in in this corner of Colorado, we need to work together on those issues. And I've worked together with U Mountain Utribe on projects in Toyac, on wildfire fuel breaks around the community, fire preparedness issues. And I used to have to go down there when I was a diver in high school. That was the only place with a diving well in the county. So we had swim practice and diving down at down in Toyac. Tourism, CO2, agriculture, those are some of our big in government services. Those are our big employers right now. That's and we need to get that more broad. I see a lot of opportunity in the wood products industry. I think that we do have a lot of forestry work to do around here. And then just the few years that I've been working on that, there's been a lot of headway. You know, we've got folks back in making plywood veneer up on 145 again. The Excelsior plant and make us burn down and David Sutton's been able to come back in there and get Excelsior going again. And there's a lot of creative new wood processing ideas that we have in our community. And the tourism, yeah, I grew up in Mesa Verde. I know it well. We do not we do not leverage this place for tourism nearly as much as we could. And I think we don't just need to bring people in here to see the sights, but we need to make sure to connect them with the goods and services while they're here so that they'll spend money in our community that can stand circulate here.
Doug, you've got a couple of, you know, slightly different subjects, but you've got someone asking about how you plan to reduce the polarization between left and right, and then a question about law enforcement and how the sheriff office is handling constitutional rights of the citizens here in the county.
I don't know what the sheriff's one's speaking to. The only thing that county commissioners really can do anything with with the sheriff is budget-related. So just looking at, you know, what are they trying to fund? Okay, and what was the first piece of that, Connor? Sorry, go back. I got sidetracked.
Yeah, just just mentioning that, you know, of course, that the county is, you know, pretty left and right, divided. And what sort of ideas do you have to reduce polarization in the future?
Yeah. I think it's still not as divided as the media still presents it to be or, you know, especially when we're all in our living rooms and getting a lot of outside external media that isn't even local news. I think things are a lot more polarized, look a lot more polarized than they really are. We all share this place and I think we can all find common ground to move forward on. So that's where I would start is saying, you know, why do you live here? What do you care about here? And let's go from there. I think there does need to be some recognition that what you do affects the people around you. We can't all just be narcissistic and get away with whatever we want to and 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 be forgiven for that. We need to be good to each other.
Do you, someone's asking, Maria Louise is asking if solar farms might be a potential income for the county in the future. Do you, someone's asking, uh, Maria Louise is asking if solar farms might be a potential income for the county in the future?
Yeah, actually, I think renewable energy is another base industry that we could potentially develop here. There's some hurdles that, um, our electric distributors, Empire Electric would have to get over. The co-ops would have to get over in order to enable that. But I know that our county can produce a lot more renewable energy than we need. So it's about figuring out ways to do that smartly and within the system or changing the system so that we can do that. And that's solar farms, possibly even wind to an extent, biomass energy. I think, and, uh, even micro hydro. We have all of those things here in southwest Colorado and I think we should, need to be starting to use those. We should be leaders in that area. And, uh, right now, we're certainly not. I have solar panels on my house and it costs twice as much a month to have them on the house as when they were put there, even though they're producing energy. Different issue that's Empire Electric. But I do think we need to work with our, um, utilities to enable people to use renewable resources here. Renewable energy. Let's see. Okay, any more big Facebook ones before I, uh, just invite some closing conversation?
Chris Chavez asking about, uh, access rights to public lands on private property roads within the county.
Yeah, that, that's always been an interesting one. There's some little pieces of BLM or Forest Service here and there that are kind of privately landlocked. And the way that's always worked in the past is you have to ask for, you know, permission from those landowners when you want to go through there and do something on that land. There's not a lot of those locked in parcels anymore, but there are a few of them. I know there's one that the county has been working, uh, near Summit Lake to try to create public access for trails there. And it's maybe a really good place for trails. But it is really hard when, you know, something new comes in next to you that wasn't there before. So, um, that's where master planning and, and being able to be engaged in conversations with our federal partners is really important. I do think there's been a lot of headway made between, uh, with our local public lands offices, working with the community and expanding their community engagement processes. So hopefully we'll see more of that moving forward as issues like that come up. Okay.
Let's see. One question from, actually, it seems like you're muted, at least on my end.
No, go ahead.
One, affordable housing was something that was, uh, came up a lot earlier on, uh, whenever you were giving your first thought.
Great, yeah, um, that's one of the things that we could potentially manufacture here, right? We can manufacture housing in this community. But you know what makes housing really expensive is we have to ship stuff in from everywhere else. And all of, most of the building materials are coming from outside, from a long ways away. So I think if we're producing more of those here, we can do better. I also think there's huge potential with cross laminated timber here, which you can use smaller diameter timber, you can use ponderosa pine, you can make whole wall panels. You know, we can have lots of tiny homes and manufactured homes out of those panels. And we are central to a lot of places with affordable housing issues. From, you know, Phoenix and Flagstaff and Denver and Salt Lake and Albuquerque. We're kind of right in the middle there to be able to supply, um, those communities as well as our own. Let's see, I have a question here. I'm not going to be able to get to all the questions. I will let you guys know that I'm going to go back through all the questions from, uh, both the Zoom meeting and the Facebook. And if there's anything that got left, uh, that didn't get answered, I'll go back through and answer those and post them to, to my website and probably link them to Facebook. Um, I do have a question if I'm going to have any in-person events. Yes, I do plan on participating in in-person events. So right now, I'm going to continue these dialogues just to have something on the schedule. The first Tuesday evenings of the month, we'll try to jump into some different topics based on what's bubbling to the top. The next two first Tuesdays, so I think that's like September 1st and October 6th, I think. And then I'm going to different community groups that are already having meetings versus setting up my own. So, um, I believe the League of Women Voters will probably host a forum for myself and Joel Stevenson, who I'm running against. And I'll be visiting the Rotary and I'll go see the Escalante, the bike race in Dolores this weekend and community yard sale and try to get out and about. And I'll probably be at the gun show. So if you have any group gatherings and would like an opportunity for folks to visit with me on, on whatever your group's gathering for, please get in touch. You can, you know, message me directly or put something in chat now and I will find that. And I, you know, you all were able to find this, so that's great. I am planning on, uh, taking some pieces of this recording and, um, putting some of those up on my website so people who couldn't join us tonight are able to, uh, also participate and listen in. A reminder, P and Z is next Thursday, the 13th at 6:00 PM. Planning and zoning meeting, if you're interested in hearing what those plans and recommendations are around the one to three acres and the new setbacks. And then that following Tuesday, uh, there will be a public hearing and we'll just have to wait for the agenda to come out for the commissioners to figure out when that public hearing about is going to be. So I, I really appreciate all of you coming in, joining me this evening, asking me some really good questions, giving me some sounding boards, um, to share some of my ideas and hopefully get better at this. I'm not much of a politician. I don't want to become much of a politician, but I want to keep bringing people from all backgrounds, uh, from all 26,000 plus perspectives in Montezuma County together. So that we all continue to have a great place to live here. So I think I'm gonna, um, I'm going to wrap it up with that and whatever questions I missed, I'm sorry. I will try to, um, make sure to answer those later on via post and writing. Thank you for joining tonight. Bye-bye to the live stream. Thank you. And I'm still on the Zoom for those few of you that are here. So if anybody has other questions, I'm willing to, to hang out and chat for a few minutes. Sorry, most of you are staying muted. That was tough. You guys asked tough questions.
I was hoping to learn more about how you're going to bring more guacamole to the county. But I was very glad that, uh, glad to hear what you said, Doug. Thanks.
Thanks for your help, Connor. Appreciate it. Always good to have a wise ass on.